I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is the first of May.
Happy May Day.
Happy May Day 2024. And I will note for the record that all three of us are present in the NatU Hill meeting room. And we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Thank you. We, the Monroe -- a little loud today. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to our department updates. And we do have Ms. Kelly here from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sorry. Covid activity in wastewater concentrations in Monroe County are still trending down. Flu activity is still at minimal levels. I did want to provide an update that the Futures Family Planning Clinic is now offering telehealth, virtual health visits. You can call 812-349-7343 for more information.
Great. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Would you please let the public know who else eligible for healthcare through the Futures Clinic?
Anyone is available to come in for services. They are offered on a sliding scale. We do accept insurance as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. As part of our -- well, let's first see if there's any other departments that have an update for us. You can come to the podium in NatU Hill. Raise your hand on Teams. All right. Seeing none, we do have a statement that we'd like to share on the recent events at IU.
Yes, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, were shocked by the recent detention and arrest of scores of Indiana University students, faculty, and staffers during what was a peaceful protest regarding the Israeli Moss War in Gaza. Not only was this heavy-handed response entirely disproportionate, but the 11th-hour change to IU's policy lacked transparency and is itself antithetical to all that Indiana University has historically supported, namely academic freedom and the freedoms granted to each of us in the Constitution of the United States.
To suggest that IU's policy changes were made in the name of public safety while simultaneously inviting Indiana State Police officers clad in full riot gear to intervene is both disingenuous and downright Orwellian. Indiana University's Dunn Meadow has seen many decades' worth of peaceful protests under the previous longstanding assembly rules. By swiftly revising those rules with breathtakingly little public input or oversight, IU administrators must surely intend to have a chilling effect on free speech and peaceful assembly on campus. This is simply unacceptable.
And finally, we urge Indiana University administrators to revert to the 1969 Dunn Meadow policy, to drop any criminal and campus disciplinary charges against the protester swept up in the recent action, and to allow subsequently barred protesting students to return to campus. And I will go ahead and make a motion that we accept this statement as reflecting our thoughts at this time.
Second.
All those in favor of -- yes, please.
I would like to hear something from Commissioner Jones about some of the history on this.
That's -- it was really, yeah.
Well, back in 1969, a long, long time ago, my father was a dean of faculty at IU. And there had been a rather unpleasant event at Ballantyne Hall where a whole lot of administrators were locked up for a day or so by protesting students. And after that experience, he suggested that Dunn Meadow be set aside permanently as a place for students to gather, experience free speech. And it has continued in that way ever since, until just recently.
So he helped create that policy, the 1969 policy?
Yes.
Amazing. That's a really great piece of history. Thank you.
I found it amazing, too, that there were snipers on the top of the Indiana Memorial Union.
Oh, my God. Yeah. Appreciate everyone's contributions to this, and thank you for the history lesson. I always appreciate that. All those in favor of accepting this statement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you all. And with that, we will move on to our proclamation for National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Commissioner Jones, if you would, please.
Whereas correctional employees protect public safety by supervising and rehabilitating those convicted of crimes in state and local correctional facilities, fulfilling the demands of the dangerous and often thankless job day and night, every day of the year. And correctional staff are professionals functioning in a myriad of valuable roles, including custody, offender medical and mental health care, education, the treatment of substance use disorders, religious services, transitional services, and a variety of other occupations. And the highest degree of professionalism is developed and advanced through continual skills improvement and specialized training throughout the year. This vital work is performed by correctional staff who dedicate themselves to serve the citizens of this great state. And Indiana correctional employees have worked toward the development of one of the best correctional systems in the nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Monroe County. This is proclaimed on the first day of May 2024.
Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay. So next, we have public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. We ask speakers to identify themselves in their county of residence and to limit their comments to three minutes. Is there anyone on Teams? Raise your hand if you'd like to offer public comment. Anyone in NatU Hill room, please go to the podium. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item.
Yes, I move approval of the minutes from April 24th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 24th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable May 1st, 2024, and payroll May 3rd, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, Auditor Gregory, if you could tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for today, May 1st, 2024, totals $1,614,214.40. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. And then the payroll docket for Friday, May 3rd, 2024, includes $1,566,918.38 indirect and the remaining $656,274.69 indirect for a grand total of $2,223,193.70. I do want to point out that there are quite a few ARPA claims that went out to the Rural Housing Repair Program that I'm sure those participants are very thankful for. So over $47,000 went out with this claim period. And then, of course, there's also the ARPA claim for the Fire Protection District. Just another set of medical equipment, chassis, and supplies. So thank you very much for that.
For the four ambulances. Excellent. That's --
I feel better already for today. Thank you.
I do, too. That's excellent. Thank you for pointing that out. That's excellent. And thank you, Ms. Purdy, for all your help with the Rural Housing Repair. I know it's making a difference in the community. I talked to someone who's getting windows replaced. And yeah, so we'll talk about that again at the end. But it's a really great program and really heartening to see people utilizing it so they can stay in their homes safely and energy efficiently. It's a bonus.
And it keeps the homes habitable, too. And we're talking about needing more homes.
Yeah.
We can't lose the ones that we've got.
Yeah, absolutely. Keep our housing stock. All right. So let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Claims Docket, accounts payable May 1st, 2024, and payroll May 3rd, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-2-0. We do not have any reports today, so we will move on to new business, please.
Yes, I move approval of the 2025 application for 5311 and 5339 Assistance for Rural Areas Grant and Approval of Resolution 2024-19.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Should we start with you, Ms. Purdy, and then go to Ms. Myers? Okay?
Yeah, please. I think that probably would be the best.
If you don't mind.
Absolutely. I'll be quick. I will be quick. I just want to kind of, for everyone's edification, this is something that we do every year with our contracts with Area 10 Rural Transit. I do want to point out for our community that this provides a much-needed service. However, this service does not provide for the transportation between Ellisville and Bloomington. That is a whole other can of worms at the moment. And, you know, if you have any questions, please talk to the Town of Ellisville Council to ask them. I know that Rural Transit will be happy to explain what's going on with that also. But I did want to ensure that people understand that the service from Ellisville to Bloomington is not covered in this contract, and that is not because of something that either Area 10 wants to do or the Commissioners want to do. This is set by the federal guidelines. So I want to hand it over to Ms. Myers.
Great. Ms. Myers, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you again for referring to me.
Can you get your mic on? There should be -- just hit any button on there.
Try another. Can you --
Ooh!
All right. Good lord, I'm so sorry for --
You sure?
All right. So we're flying high now. Yeah, so I'm Chris Myers with Area 10. And we've been partnering with Monroe County for probably 35 years or so to provide rural transit, public transportation. We do that in four counties: Monroe, Owen, Lawrence, and Putnam. And as Angie said, that does not include that urban-to-urban trip, which we're trying to negotiate and working through those situations right now. But for the regular ongoing operations, we are asking for your approval to apply for the renewal grant for a budget total of $1,806,359. Of that, the federal 5311 funds would be $868,409. State funds would be $311,595. And then the remainder is a combination of local government support, contracts, Medicaid, non-emergency medical transportation, and in-kind. And that's a total of $574,214. We are asking for Monroe County government support specifically of $80,000 towards that local match. In addition, the application is for capital, so we are looking to replace two of our large buses, which are 16-passenger, two-wheelchair capacity. And that total would be $293,150, which has gone up quite a bit in the last few years. The local match for that is $58,630, and Area 10 has the funds to support that at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that it's really unfortunate about Ellisville not wanting apparently to support transportation between there and Bloomington. I'm sure that's affecting a lot of people's lives.
Well, Ellisville did actually step up and provide an allocation for the rest of this year. So we're running a parallel service with the support of Monroe County and the Town of Ellisville. It took a lot of work to get there, and it's been good to have that security, at least for the riders, and certainty of that transportation through the rest of 2024. What we're hoping our small work group is working on, trying to come up with a feasible solution for continuing that service past 2024. And so I know that we're -- there's several of us working on that.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens? I wanted to ask Ms. Purdy, on the cover sheet and then the second paragraph of what's on our agenda, it says authorizing Resolution 2022-14.
That's the wrong number.
It's that's -- it should be the 2024-19, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but it didn't get corrected on the --
It didn't get corrected in the agenda, but that's -- that was on me. That's not on staff.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that I didn't misunderstand something here.
Yeah, nope, nope. And that was completely on me.
So -- But you wrote that right.
Yeah, yeah. I want to thank everybody for all the hard work to make sure that we do have the Ellisville to Bloomington transit going, especially because we know that some of the folks that are making use of that are using that to get to doctors' offices, to pick up prescriptions. These are not frivolous kinds of activities folks are engaged in.
Right. Getting to work. Yeah, so any origin or destination that falls into what Indot and the Census, using the Census, have determined is a urbanized area, I would just call it a densely populated area, that can no longer be served by rural transit itself. But thank goodness, you figured out a great way around it. And I cannot thank you for all your hard work. We got through -- we got 2024 funded. I know we worked with the council to utilize ARPA funding for our share of it, and the Ellisville Town Council agreed. But I think we do need a new plan going forward, and I had a good conversation with Indot last week, so we will talk. We'll talk. So we have some work to do, and we have to come up with a permanent solution because we cannot keep spending our time doing this. I don't think it's useful. I think we need a permanent solution, or at least work toward a permanent solution.
Absolutely. I'm happy to help in that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, so we do have a meeting coming up Saturday, Friday. All right, so is there any public comments on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Mr. Angie from the Chamber.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Christopher Angie from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to echo Commissioner Giffens' comments about these rides and support this appropriation. These are not Joey rides. These are essential transportation needs for citizens getting to work, getting to doctor's appointments. And my hats off to Ms. Myers, Rural Transit and Area 10 on this, the work they put in with the Town of Ellisville should be very much applauded. Commissioner Thomas especially, your work in getting this happen. And the Chamber is ready to help in any way we can to make a long-term solution. We can't go through this every year. This is not something that's sustainable. So we need to come up with a solution, and we're here to help in any way we can. But we thank everybody who's worked on this issue because it is a very important issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the 2025 application for 5311, 5339 Assistance for Rural Areas Grant and Approval of Resolution 2024-19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll turn this off now.
Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of Bio-1 Northwest Indianapolis for hazardous material removal at Thompson property. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number, 1138, and an amount not to exceed $42,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and Ms. Purdy is going to handle this one.
Yes.
Because I know where Mr. Kreider is.
I'm handling Mr. Kreider's agenda items today. We've actually, the county's used Bio-1 before in cleaning up particular properties. And so this is, as it says, it said not to exceed for $42,000. The contract is estimating a seven-to-12-day duration, and this is a ratification. And I don't know if that was noted at the time, but this is a ratification because they have actually already started the work, yes, on Monday, I believe it was.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Appreciate that this was arranged quickly. Any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Bio-1 Northwest Indianapolis for hazardous removal, hazardous material removal at Thompson property signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and this is a ratification. Next item, please.
Move approval of the recommendation to award Harold Fish, Inc. bid for the HVAC upgrades at the Monroe County Convention Center. Fund name, American Rescue Plan Act, fund number 8950, and an amount of $505,309.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Purdy, I'm going to lean on you again.
Yep, I've got this one. This was requesting that you accept bid package number two from HFI. They were the lowest and most responsive bidder for this project. This is using ARPA funds for our local convention center and giving them a much-needed, replaced, and upgraded cooling tower, the necessary circulation pumps, and system controls and upgrades.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I know that, talking with Talisha Kopick, that she's excited about having these things taken care of.
Yeah, absolutely. This has been on our list for a very long time, and but getting the specs and then the bids out has take -- it always takes time, and it's -- but it's worked out well. So I appreciate Mr. Kreider's work on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of awarding Harold Fish, Inc. bid for HVAC upgrades at the Monroe County Convention Center signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval -- sorry, I'm trying to get to the -- send my -- move approval of Effect TV streaming slash television impression for early voting commercial. Fund name, county general. Fund number, 1,000, in an amount of $6,000, which is to cover both the primary and the general elections.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We'll start with Ms. Turner-King. And we have Ms. Moreland here as well. Thank you.
As an update, County Legal received this contract on February -- or February, the 12th of April. And the contract itself contemplates that Effect TV will do airing and streaming of a commercial, but it did not contemplate the fact that Effect TV would be providing editing services of a commercial. I've been emailing back and forth with Effect TV representatives, but as of right now, I have not heard back from them since Friday, so we do not have a finalized agreement. My concern is if Effect TV is going to be providing editing services for a commercial for -- they've already done the primary commercial. They're going to be doing the general. Those editing services should be contemplated and explained or outlined in our contract, and that is not the current case.
Thank you. Ms. Moreland?
Good morning, Commissioners. I came for Clerk Brown just to give a little bit of an update on this. So Clerk Brown's contract with Effect TV, under our acknowledgement, was not finalized or signed. And so we just wanted to make sure that you guys were updated on that. Didn't know if it was going to be relayed yet or not. But also, she just wanted to say that she wants to work closely with me and County Attorney Molly, and so that we can get this finalized and submitted to you guys for the general election in a timely manner for that, so that we can have it done and out of the way.
Okay, great. So it won't cover the primary election at all? And so will -- and then what will the amount be?
Correct. She's wanting to work with them so that we can get this all just scheduled for the general. She's thinking that there will not be enough time for it to be submitted for the primary.
Okay, but I still don't feel like I have my answer about the cost.
We won't have one at this time until we get with them again to get a final cost for just the general.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Purdy worked on this a little bit.
Yeah, so I believe Mr. King noted that the first contract came on, like, April 12th to her attention. In the week of the 15th, it became known to us that the person who was doing the editing no longer wanted to do that service. And so then we were -- everybody was in a bit of a panic as to how do we solve this problem, because we're already well into early voting. And so we reached out, Ms. Turner-King and I, reached out to Andrew Lambert, who does consulting work for the county already, a lot of our social media posting. And he was willing to step forward and go with it. So we were waiting. We had that conversation with him on Friday morning, that was the 19th. And I know that Ms. Turner-King reached out to the clerk, was waiting to hear back from them. I sent Mr. Lambert an email, actually, at the end of the day on Friday, and said we still haven't heard back from the clerk's office regarding the early voting commercial. But I wanted to go ahead and give him some information in the event that we would hear something early Monday, so that they could go ahead and get started. So I gave him some links to the early voting site, information on the website. So anyway, needless to say, that all didn't happen, and it sounds to me like the clerk has decided that it's best just to kind of forego the early voting commercials and now work on the general. Is that my understanding?
Yes, so when we -- so the original person that takes care of our editing in the past, when they decided not to go forward with the contract through us and the county, Clerk Brown had reached out to our rep with Comcast for the Effects TV, and they contacted who we use for our editing, and they decided to work together through their company and then not have to have a second source for that.
So they're subcontracting. Yeah, okay. Can you give us any numbers on how many people have voted already?
Let me grab my phone really quickly.
I'll see if you have questions or comments, and then I'll make a motion to continue.
So as of live results currently, we are at 2,839 voters for walk-in alone. And then with the churnout right now -- And then with the turnout right now, we were starting to reach out to other counties to see how things were going and seeing if it was just us that has a low turnout or if it's everybody. And more, the majority of the state of Indiana is all stating that for their elections, it's been a ghost town in some counties. And then we are currently sitting at 3.1%, and there's other counties that are lower than that.
Wow. Just letting that sink in.
Ms. Turner King, you had numbers on early voting from, and that included the mail-in, right, for 2016?
I don't have numbers from mail-ins, but in speaking with Ms. Moreland yesterday, I think I have the number for early voting altogether at the end of 2016.
Correct.
And, let me find it.
So primary and general.
At the end of 2016, which would have been the last president, pre-COVID, kind of discounted 2020 for various reasons, 23,249 individuals voted via early voting.
In the primary.
In the primary.
In the primary, and that's early voting as in walking in, mail-in ballots, travel board, all of the early voting processes. Yeah, it's been completely different than what we were anticipating.
And yet, as I've been out, people say, yes, I'm gonna vote, yes, I'm gonna vote, and so it's shocking.
Yeah, a lot of people said they're gonna vote on Election Day, I just want to warn you that when I talk to, as I've been knocking on doors, yeah, I've been hearing a lot of, I'm waiting till Election Day.
Yeah, I actually had a lady that called in and was asking a few questions, and she said that her and a whole group of friends have decided that they're not voting early, they're waiting until Election Day. And we were speaking to her, and then she had said something about her entire church is all voting on Election Day. And I was just like, okay, so Election Day's gonna be completely different.
Sounds like it, yeah. Well, I think having early voting is a great convenience for a lot of people.
Yes.
That's a really good thing, did you?
I think it might be a good time to remind the public of the early voting hours.
Yes. Yeah, so early voting is Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then we also have, oh, sorry, 6:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then Saturday is eight, nine to four. And then we'll be open again Monday, 8:00 to noon.
Great, thank you so much. Did you have any questions or comments?
Not really.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to continue this item, the Effect TV streaming television impression for early voting commercials to a date uncertain, a date to be specified in the future on another agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor of continuing this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Next item please.
Yes, move approval of partnership MOUs with Monroe County Parks and Recreation, Monroe County Emergency Management, and Monroe County Humane Association.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Who is managing this item today? I don't see Ms. Whitmer online. Would you like to give it a shot?
Yeah, I can pitch in this. So this is an MOU that is been drafted outlining an agreement mainly regarding a storage locker that is shared between these entities. They've been sharing it in the past, and so we just wanted to memorialize their agreement. It provides for that Parks has the storage agreement, and in One Bay, the Humane Society stores items at no cost. And I think Emergency Management has items out there too. There's no cost associated or anything with the agreement, it was just to outline that each party is, what their access rights to the storage unit is.
Yeah. Great, and outlines who's responsible for loss and all of that, got it. Makes a lot of sense. Any comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I was curious, I may have misunderstood this. These, this equipment, there's equipment for the Humane Society and other equipment for Emergency Management? I was just trying to figure out what equipment they would mutually use.
In looking at the agreement, it does indicate that the Humane Society has equipment out there. And in talking to Ms. Whitmer about this, I believe that Emergency Management has equipment out there, or they, if they need access to it, or something, they are allowed to get it.
Okay, it's just in access.
Or anything of that nature.
Okay, I had misunderstood it slightly.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I had heard about this at the Parks meeting, so we're good, I'm glad that we're able to do this. Especially given that Parks Department has a dog park and stuff like that too.
Yeah. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the partnership memorandum of understandings with Monroe County Parks and Recreation, Monroe County Emergency Management, and Monroe County Humane Association signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, next item please.
Yes, move approval of the Indiana Department of Health Grant for HIV Prevention. Fund name, harm reduction, fund number 8153, and in a grant amount of $31,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kelly, tell us all about it.
So this grant award funds our harm reduction specialist. The state is currently looking at changing the grant cycle, so this is essentially just extending the current funding that we are in. And then we anticipate the new grant cycle will begin in August.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I thank you for having this kind of person in the department. And this, I want to remind people, this is for every resident of Monroe County.
Yeah, absolutely, benefits everybody. Commissioner Jones?
Just pleased that this is happening.
Yeah. All right, thank you for getting another grant. There we go, the stack gets taller. Any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health Grant for HIV Prevention signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero, next item please.
Move approval of the Indiana Family Health Council Subrecipient Agreement for Title 28 TANF Grant. Fund name, TANF, fund number 8150, in the amount of $112,078.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kelly.
This grant just helps to support personnel and supplies for our futures family planning clinic. We do alternate between Title 10 funding and this TANF Grant Award. In addition, we rely on program income that we generate from sliding sale payments and insurance reimbursements. So this is just going to help extend us essentially from April until September.
Great, thank you so much, very important service provided to our community. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm amazed by both the previous grant and this one, at what targets that you're expected to reach. And I keep thinking, if you have to increase it by 5% or 20% or whatever each year, when do you reach your ceiling on these things? But, thank you.
See if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Family Health Council Subrecipient Agreement for Title 20 TANF Grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, next item.
Move approval of Limelight Recovery LLC Agreement, fund name, Local Public Health Services, fund number 1161, in an amount of $5,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kelly.
So this is a new proposal program that we are looking to partner with Limelight Recovery for substance use classes that they will be hosting through the Indiana Recovery Alliance. This will help cover costs for up to 28 individuals. Essentially, this is like a pilot program to see how this will work, to see if we could expand services in 2025.
Great. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this, I hope this is very successful and can be expanded.
Commissioner Giffens?
I was reading something yesterday about doing harm reduction with teenagers. And will that also, will teens be allowed into this program, I guess?
I would clarify that with Allison, I would assume, but I don't want to speak for them. But I will definitely find that out and let you know.
It's a really good question. Well, it seems like it's a really hard target, targeted audience to reach. And there, some of the stuff I was reading, you have to go about it in a very, very precise way, or you have the opposite effect of what you want to have.
Yeah. All right, I'm also hopeful that this will lead to bigger and better things for our community. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Limelight Recovery LLC signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item please.
Yes, move approval of Motorola, I can't even talk today, Motorola Solutions Agreement for replacement of jail module Spillman Program Migration. Fund number cumulative capital, fund name, that's written wrong, fund name cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $7,787.87.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Crowe, tell us all about it.
Good morning, everyone. The Spillman Program that's utilized by the Monroe County Jail for the recordskeeping of individuals booked or incarcerated into our jail resides on a old server, it's server 2012, which went out of service life in October 2023. So as part of security best practices and at least not a requirement of our insurance, we have to retire any servers that are of end of life. We did reach out to Motorola to try to look for a cloud-based solution rather than place an on-prem server. Unfortunately, after a couple of months of working with Motorola, they were not able to provide a cloud-based option that fits our needs at this time. So now we're having to go back and look at replacing that server once again. So the 2012 server will be replaced with a virtual server utilizing server 2022 OS. And at that point, then we will need Motorola's assistance in migrating all our systems over onto that new server. So this request is to approve the quote provided by Motorola to take care of that data migration and program setup.
Thank you so much, that is a very clear explanation of a very complicated thing that you're working on. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I'm just grateful we have someone like Mr. Crowe to take care of these things.
And to explain it to us.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
I agree.
Thank you for working on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Motorola Solutions Agreement for replacement of jail module Spillman Program Migration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good day.
Next item please.
Move approval of SJCA, Inc. On Call Agreement, fund name Cumulative Bridge, fund number 1135, in an amount that will be hourly as needed.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Ridge joining us via Teams, good morning.
Good morning, this is just an on-call agreement that we have with different consultants. It's on an as-needed basis, just basically if we need to reach out for any additional engineering assistance on a project or anything of that sort.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, these things always seem to happen when there's an emergency, and so it's good that we have this contract in place.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you don't want to have to wait to bring all the information forward and get a contract signed. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the SICA, Inc. On Call Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item please.
Yes, move approval of Amethyst House Opioid Settlement Grant Agreement 2024. Fund name opioid settlement, fund number 9164, in an amount of $93,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Purdy.
Yes, good morning, this agreement is a long time coming, you guys actually talked about it in 2023 with providing support to Amethyst House. We actually had an appropriation at the end of the year by the council for this, and we did not get the money dispensed at that time because we did not have the contract. So as I've stated, a long time coming, this is the contract to provide Amethyst with funding to help support them with their part-time physician, who provides consultations, physicals for residents, and reviews admissions, potential residential applications, things of that nature, including medication-assisted treatment. It also provides for a full-time master's level social worker, and it also provides for clinical training for trauma-informed care, which is, as indicated by the health officer, is an important part of addressing people with substance needs. So just requesting your agreement for this, this money has actually already been appropriated by council. And once it is agreed, then we'll be able to get Mr. DeLonge, who has had the patience of Job, a check.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I fully support this item, I'm really pleased that we have, that we have Amethyst House here in our community to help those. And I think getting to the trauma-informed care actually would help people who have been self-medicating because of things that have happened to them. So I think that that should be part of the package.
Absolutely. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this, I'm really pleased that we're doing this. I believe Amethyst House is probably the oldest and longest-lasting business of that sort, I'm not sure.
Treatment provider, yeah?
Yeah, treatment provider, that's good.
Really, yeah, they make a, they have a great impact on our community, they make a difference. And I, and I just, you know, want to note that in addition to what Ms. Purdy has done to work on this, Commissioner Giffens has also played a big role in managing and helping to determine the use of the opioid settlement dollars. And I really appreciate your work on that, that's a, it's a big task, and it's very, it's very important to consider where that money goes.
Well, and Auditor Gregory also has played a role in this.
Thank you.
As we look over the money and where it should be spent. And I want to say that this fits directly with some of the grant sort of requirements, that this is addressing harm reduction.
Yeah.
And treatment specifically.
Great. Thank you so much, let's see if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Amethyst House Opioid Settlement Grant Agreement for 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of, to ratify the Advanced Correctional Health Contract Amendment Number Three. Fund name, County General. Fund number 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $1,682,678 per year.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. I don't know, Ms. Turner King, if you could tell us about this?
So advanced health, or advanced correctional healthcare provides the medical services to inmates of the correctional center. This amendment provides for three additional services not originally encompassed in the 2022 agreement. This will provide an additional 40 hours per week for a qualified mental health professional. We currently are set at 80. This adds a discharge planner for 40 hours per week and an addictions professional, whether that is substance abuse counselor or substance use disorder evaluator. So it increases one service already in the contract and adds two additional.
Right. And just to be clear, the total amount, annual amount of 1.6 plus million is for the entire contract.
Correct.
That is not just those three services. I just want to make sure the public understands that. It is very expensive.
Yes, and then there will be an increase, and I can find it real quick, the exact amount, but the monthly increase won't, it won't start calculating until the agreement's approved and the services begin being rendered, because there'll be a timeframe where advanced correction needs to secure someone to provide those.
Okay, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Has the council approved this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying the Advanced Correctional Health Contract Amendment Number Three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We don't have any appointments today. We do have some announcements. I will note that Election Day is Tuesday, May 7th, 6:00 to 6:00 at your local polling place. You may take advantage of early voting, as we talked about before, at Election Operations, which is 302 South Walnut, across from the Bloomington Transit Terminal. And those hours are nine, 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to, I don't think that works, right?
Kind of four.
Yeah, 9:00 to 4:00 on.
It's coming Saturday.
Saturday. And Monday, so our, our minutes are wrong. And then Mondays will be just 8:00 to 4:00, I mean, sorry, 8:00 to noon on Monday, May 6th. So let's encourage folks to get out and vote. It's an important thing to do. And I appreciate in advance the work of all the poll workers who are going to be providing a really important civic service for our community. So thank you to everyone working the polls. I will also note that we will not have a commissioner meeting on Wednesday, May 8th. So there is COVID testing available at the Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th. You can also go to Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 323 East Miller Drive, and vaccines are also available there. As always, we are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to co.munro.in.us for more information. And as always, we continue to hold virtual office hours via Teams each month for anyone who has a question or concern for us. And you can go to the calendar at co.munro.in.us and look for available dates and times. Blood drives continue. These are cosponsored by IV Tech and the American Red Cross in addition to Monroe County. The blood drives are at Shreve Hall. The next one is Thursday, May 9th, 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Friday, May 10th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can make an appointment at redcross.org. Also want to encourage people to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System for all emergency-related information. You can go to co.munro.in.us and click on the megaphone in the middle of the homepage screen. As noted earlier, we have, we continue to offer rural housing repair, excuse me, Zen Height, support for low and moderate-income residents of our community who need some repairs. This is for owner-occupied homes only. And please, we encourage folks who need that kind of help, we're talking about things like roofs and windows and doors and HVAC and plumbing, to contact their township trustee for further information and to sign up. Residents, this is for residents outside of the city of Bloomington, and it's, if you live outside the city of Bloomington, our Prairie Township resident, we ask you to contact our office, the commissioner's office, directly for assistance instead. Anything else for the good of the order?
Just want to urge people to get out and vote. 3% is just alarming.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you, everyone. Do we have, I did not see a work session agenda. We don't have anything for the work session?
There wasn't anything posted.
I'm, no, I don't think I have anything for the work session.
Okay, all right.
Right answer.
We do not have a work session. So with that, we are adjourned and we will be back in two weeks. Thank you, everyone.